Planning Commission meeting of the Charter Township of Oxford to order. And if we would all rise and uplay our respects to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the secretary would note the roll, please.
Noted.
And we have two abs.
Two abs.
Mike and Mike, okay. I'd like for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion was made by John, by Mr. Knoll, or Noel, I mean, excuse me, and seconded by Mr. Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. I'd like a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 11th, 2019.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Curtis and supported by Mr. Hunwick. All those in favor say aye.
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 Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on anything tonight that's not on our regular agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll slide, is there any commissioner's comments this evening? Want to start with you, Jack, on your end?
Sure. Last night, we got the approval to go to the village, get permission to run a sanitary sewer line through the village during the M-24 construction from Oakdale to Harriet Street. And why this is being done is, any of the developments coming, Beaumont and such, are going to be required to put in lift stations to push it up to the north, or the east, and push it to the west. So, and an opportunity came about, and we've been working to get it to go, and last night, they approved the design money to do it. And we're going to go to the village on Tuesday to, according to the state act, we have to have their permission to run a sewer line through their village. Secondly, last night, we put the remainder of the Dunlap Levy property, what's known as Mickelson, we put the remainder of that in the sanitary sewer and water district. And the 50 acre, approximately 50 acre piece of commercial property on the corner of Ray Road and M-24 is now in the water and sewer district. Let's see, what else? We did a lot of things last night. They, the board approved chloriding of all gravel roads in 2020 at no cost to the residents. And we approved road improvements to West Davis and Lake Road and to East Drainer Road. Lot of work last night.
That's a good one, though.
Yeah, it is, because that road's tore up. And...
So who pays for all the gravel?
Well...
I'm sorry, we're not...
Yeah.
Excuse me.
And I'm just going to leave it at that right now. Oh, yeah. Some of you may have heard, but the text amendment that we approved is going to come back to the ordinance review subcommittee to re-review it with some of the people in the district.
I'm going to go to Meg.
Thank you.
You got anything, Meg?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. John?
I have nothing.
Ed?
No comment.
I have no comments after that last one I just heard.
Thank you.
I'll move on to our first public hearing of the evening, which is, the purpose of this is to receive public comment for the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance of 67A, Article 3, Section 2, which is our official zoning map. And I'm going to turn, well, public hearing, you're, are you going to start with us first, Lauren?
Do we have to open first, or?
We do have to open it.
Public hearing first.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to discuss the zoning ordinance, 67A, Article 3, Section 2, official zoning map, and I'll make that at 7:04 PM.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we are now open. Are you, Lauren, are you going to start with us on that, before we go to public comment then? Presentation by the petitioners, you, correct?
Right, but you just opened the public hearing, so you would want to let the public comment, and then close it, and then have...
Okay.
Comments from township consultants.
But shouldn't we have, and that's why I was a little questioning something, shouldn't we have started with you as the petitioner?
No, I, the planning commission is, well, the ORC, I suppose, is the petitioner. Jack introduced it, we open the public hearing, and then we close it, and then I'll...
All right. I don't run these meetings normally, so I'm just questioning, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So is there anyone here from the public to comment on our proposed amendments to the zoning map?
Just to comment, it seems illogical to me that you wouldn't, that the information you're going to change so the public can comment on it, because we don't know what the changes are that may impact us. So, at this time, no, there would be no public comments, because we don't know what the amendments are, they weren't posted on the webs.
We can hear you, but we could have heard you better up here. Okay. So Lauren, that's what I meant. We don't make, we don't make those presentations first?
No, it's, the introduction to the public hearing, or to the amendment, is in the agenda there, which is, if you, I mean, certainly if you'd like me to make a, to expect you first.
I would appreciate it, I think, for the benefit of, we do have a couple of audience members here.
Sure, yeah.
I think it would be a good effort to make that known. Just so people know what we're actually doing with this amendment.
Okay. Would you like to close the public hearing first?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:07 PM.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're going to start over, okay. Lauren, would you please give us a brief...
Certainly, certainly.
Presentation.
Yes, so the first amendment that we have before you is the updating of the zoning map. It is a combination of a correction of, rather, three corrections and updating the, I'm sorry, two corrections and the updating of the parcel layer. So two of the, the two corrections are that, there were two consent judgments issued in 1983 and in 1982, and they, at one time, were shown on the map. However, sometime between when they were represented on the map and now, or a month ago, they were removed.
True.
And they, I don't believe that they were removed intentionally. There's still valid consent judgments on these two properties. So one of them is on Oakwood, the other one is on Stanton. And so the correction, the two corrections are to re-represent those, to put those back onto the map where they go. The update is that the parcel layer that lays underneath the districts is provided to the township by the county. It's updated, updated and maintained by the county when lot splits and lot combinations come in. And ever so often, annually, it's good to update that, to reflect those changes in lot lines. So that parcel map was provided to us by the county, and we, we put it on the map to update it to the most current property owner lines, parcel lines.
Thank you, I understand it all, I just wanted to make sure that other people knew what we were talking about. Now we can open the public hearing. I guess I would like to have a motion for that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to, for the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, 67A, Article 3, Section 2, official zoning map at 7:09.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now our public testimony could be heard, if you have any, if there's anyone from the audience that would wish to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'd like to see a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing at 7:10 PM.
And I'll second that.
A motion to close from Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that public hearing is now closed. We have another public hearing tonight, and for the purpose of that, oh, excuse me, we have to review the comments from the township's consultants, sorry.
Which we just did.
Which we just did. And review of correspondence, commissioners' discussion, is there any?
I see both consent judgments, consent judgments on the map, and I'm looking, trying to find all of the layering, but I don't see, recognize any that are wrong, so I don't have any.
Are you talking about from the county, or from, on behalf of what?
County and us.
Okay. Is there any other commission discussion? Do we need another motion?
We need a motion to approve the amendments.
Thank you, Susan.
Based on the draft zoning ordinance map amendments received from the township planner and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, I move that the planning commission recommended the township board approval of the following zoning ordinance amendments. Amendment to Article 3, Section 2, Township Zoning Map as amended.
I'll second.
A motion made by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel, to approve these amendments as stated previously. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So there's really no discussion on the motion then?
Nope.
Now, does that mean that that's automatically going to be our vote of recommendation to the township board?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that public hearing is now closed, correct? We good?
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks, I just, I'm trying to follow the rules on public hearings, I want to make sure I'm correct. Okay, now, our next public hearing is going to be presented by our petitioner. Oh, we need a roll call for the, for that motion, the last motion, excuse me. Okay, the previous motion we just did a high call on, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Curtis?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now we're passing that recommendation on to the township board. Okay, for the purpose of our next public hearing, Lauren, do you want to give us a presentation, please?
Yep, absolutely. The ordinance review subcommittee has been tasked by the township board to examine the cafe and patio provisions that we have in our ordinance for future developments, as well as guidelines for restaurants that exist. This amendment updates the restaurant use, the definitions, and touches a number of other sections, including the district uses. It provides a new, a new, a new section for restaurant, for restaurant, outdoor cafes and patios. And I think the clearest way for me to go through this is, is to read some of the changes, as, if that's okay.
Yeah, and I'll just kind of follow through on the screen as you read them down then.
Right, great. So the first thing that this amendment does is adds two new definitions under restaurant. Definitions is Section 2.2, that's outdoor cafe as number seven, an outdoor area adjoining a restaurant consisting of tables, chairs, plantings, and related decorations, where the following is provided. Table service of food and/or beverages, including the service of alcoholic beverages. And number eight, the definition of an outdoor patio, which is an outdoor area adjoining a restaurant consisting of tables and chairs, and which is limited to the size, which is not greater than 20% of the gross floor area of the restaurant. And does not include table service of food and/or beverages, live music, amplified music, dancing, staged entertainment, or service of alcoholic beverages. These new definitions also affect the intent of the districts in which they're permitted or provided as a special use. Those districts are found in Section 3.4 F, which is C1, local commercial. The local commercial districts are intended to provide a limited number of locations for clusters of retail stores and personal service establishments for the everyday convenience of the nearby residential neighborhoods. And, let's see, that also provides the, the permitted or special use in C1, local commercial. Outdoor patio will now be included as a permitted use, subject to Section 5.35, which will be the new section added. And Section L of 3.5 as well, which adds an outdoor cafe as a special land use in the general commercial, C2, district, also subject to Section 5.35. 5.35 then reads that the, it is the titled Restaurant Outdoor Cafes and Patios. And it reads, outdoor cafe, subject to special use conditions imposed by the planning commission in accordance with Article 4, special land use, with the exception that no site plan will be required unless requested by the planning commission, and subject to the following requirements, added on the date that they're added. Restaurant uses, uses may also include an outdoor patio, subject to the requirements of this section and to administrative review by the building department, including, number one, seasonal use restrictions, limited to April 1st through October 31st. Number two, hours of operation. Number three, sketch plan indicating location of tables, chairs, awnings, canopies, protective fencing, railings, planters, or other pedestrian barriers. Number four, compliance with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission requirements. Number five, compliance with the Township Noise Regulations, Article 10, Section J of the zoning ordinance. And number six, other conditions as required by the planning commission, with the planning commission retaining the option of requiring a full site plan. And basically, the important differentiation here between the patio and the, and the general commercial is that local commercial is a less intense commercial district. And the committee and myself advising as the planner found that a patio similar to Frosty Boy, that provides patio, or chairs, tables, an area for someone to consume food that was bought maybe at a nearby restaurant or store, or could consume it there. And then, C2, as a general commercial district, a more intense district, being where the cafe, where an outdoor cafe that's connected to a restaurant providing food and beverage on the patio on premise would be allowed as a special use.
But I think the key ingredient to point out too, though, is it has to come to the planning commission.
Right.
Under that special use for approval, and have a public hearing in regards to all that at that time too. So then that's public input to have that outdoor situation occur. We were critical on noting that when we put that together. I think that's important for the residents to know that. Okay, thank you. Is there...
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, 67A, to add regulations to restaurant use definition categories, special land use regulations, and edits C1, local commercial. Intent of district provisions as shown in Article 2, Section 2, definitions, Article 3, Section 4, intent of districts, Article 3, Section 5.K, schedule of use regulations, C1, local commercial. Article 3, Section 5.L, 5.L, schedule use of regulations, C2, general commercial, Article 5, use regulations, add Section 35, restaurant owner cafes at 7:19.
I'll second that lengthy motion.
I'm supposed to read it all, aren't you?
Okay, I've got a motion by Jack to open the public hearing in regards to what he just stipulated, and seconded by Mr. Noel, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the, now we can have public testimony if anyone is here to speak in regards to that.
Good evening. Mary Ann Kane is a resident of the Stony Lake Village condos in the Waterstone community. And my intent to come this evening was to educate myself as to what exactly the changes you were proposing to what was stated in the agenda. So I appreciate the conversation. I was glad to hear Acting Chairperson, Mr. Berger, that you would hold a public hearing prior to any approval of an outdoor cafe, so that any residents that might be impacted would be able to speak. So I was, I applaud you for that. There were three concerns that I had looked at in regards to this, and you've addressed a couple of them this evening already. It was just the noise, how it would impact the noise ordinance, because, as you know, our community is being impacted already by an existing outdoor cafe. And when many folks go out to the parking lot and unlock their vehicles, you'd be amazed at how, because we have a lake, which is a conduit of sound, the amount of noise that we hear from outdoor conversations and from cars being opened and closed and locked and whatnot. So I would look at the noise ordinance impact. And then also, you had mentioned about the barriers, safety for folks, if it's being located in a parking area, that it would have some type of landscaping or physical barriers around it to protect the patrons and those passersby. But the third concern, I didn't hear addressed, and that's the waste management issue. Again, we're being impacted where, there was an agreement about where waste receptacles would be placed, that it would be in a corralled area so that animals and, and other folks could not, you know, impede going into the garbage receptacles. And that's currently not being adhered to. So that's always my concern, is depending on the size of what the outdoor patio cafe, how many patrons might be utilizing it, is that, what would their waste management impact be in their signature of that? When I tried to prepare myself for this evening, I tried to look what the proposed changes were and what the considerations were, but I didn't find it on the township website. So I know that you don't really interact with those of us this evening asking questions, but I didn't know where I might be able to look. Now I see it in red. Where could I have found that to prepare for this evening, so I would be a little more educated to come before you and to know what to expect? But given that, those are, again, you mentioned about the hours of operation and the noise and the barriers, and, and those were, were the concerns that I also had in regards to this evening's discussion about this item. Thank you.
We don't generally do cross-conversation during this part of, part of the meeting, but I would hope to think, please come to the office next time and ask for that, because we all have that, you can have a hard copy.
I'm going to give you my copy, if you'd like to have that.
Thank you, I will, I will take that, thank you. Thank you.
Because that's, that's important for people to know what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes, there's always, there's always a packet available in the clerk's office for any meeting. So anytime, when you see an agenda posted, there's a corresponding packet, that you can come into the office, you can look at it, you can ask for copies of whatever you want out of it.
I appreciate that, sometimes it's just time constraint, you know, constraints and, and dealing with, but I appreciate that, because I did try to look on the website and didn't see it there, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public here to speak in regards to that? If not, I guess I would...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for these text amendments on, at 7:23.
I'll second that.
A motion made to close the public hearing by Mr. Curtis and supported by Mr. Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next would be comments from the township's consultants and staff, if there is any. Review of the correspondence, is there any more review? Commissioners discussion, is there any discussion from any of the commissioners?
I was just curious how the dates were decided, April 1st to October 31st? Was that just arbitrary? Six months? It's just a curiosity. Yeah, sure. We looked, I brought to the committee a number of ordinances that exist in similar sized townships, in neighboring townships. And typically, what we recommend is the season, that's actually even, even a little bit broader than what a number of communities allow to get the most out of the patio if people are putting it in.
There are patios, I guess not even patios, I guess that would fall under a cafe, where we see the igloos set out, that would be a cafe, that wouldn't be patio.
Correct. Yeah, if there's food service or beverage service.
And the igloos are out in the winter months, because they sit out on the...
But that, that tech, oh, I'm interrupting, sorry.
That's it, thank you.
That technically wouldn't be an approved structure for that purpose unless they came in and asked for that, though. I mean, I don't know how other communities are handling it, but there's been research from the code officials group that most of the materials involved in the products that have been currently placed in communities is not an acceptable community, it's very flammable. And there's other communities that have then since stopped those from occurring within their communities until someone comes up with a solution for the fire rating of the product. So that became a concern of the Oakland County Building Official Association recently, due to what happened last winter, when several places, all of a sudden, had them cropping up. But I don't, I don't want to get into any more on that. Is there any other commissioner discussion?
I, the young lady brings up a point, that we can't put the packet on the website prior to the meeting?
Most of the time, the whole packet, it, we don't have the capacity, memory capacity to...
Put it on the website?
Put it on the website, not with the current server. But we, there's a notebook on the counter that the packet is in.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I gotta, I want to ask a question in regards to that, then, Susan, if someone asks for maybe a specific com- a portion of it?
Mm-hmm.
Would they receive it that way?
Yeah, we could email it.
Yeah, okay. Or the phone call, okay, that works better.
Well, a resident could request an email of a certain portion of the packet.
Sure, sure.
Is there any other commissioner discussion? Seeing none, I guess I would look for a motion then to...
Based upon the draft zoning ordinance text amendments to add regulations to restaurant use definition categories, special land use regulations, and edit C1, local commercial. Intent of district provisions as shown, as received from the township planner and as reflected in the meeting, in the minutes of this meeting, I move that the planning commission recommended the township board approval of the following zoning ordinance amendments. Article 2, Section 2, definitions. Number 2, Article 3, Section 4, intent of districts. Article 3, Section 5.K, schedule of use regulations, C1, local commercial, and C2, general commercial. Number 4, Article 5, use regulations to add Section 35, restaurant, outdoor cafes and...
Can't get rid of that by...
Patios.
I'll second that motion.
I lost my stuff, and this is not my doing here. Let me go back after it. Sorry.
We have a second.
We have a second on the, oh, Jack made the motion, who's, you second? Uh, thank you, Jack, I'm trying to find something, says my license expired on this machine, it's not mine, it's the township's. Sorry. Discussion on the, okay, there is no discussion, the motion was made. Uh, we need, no, is this a roll call? This a roll call vote? Okay, I'd like a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Curtis?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I can't believe this just happened, because I want to pull, I want to pull that, yeah, plug this in and see what happens real quick.
So now we just go home and don't...
No, we're not going to go home. This isn't my, this isn't my piece of equipment.
Only if we have a motion, that I can second.
Goes on the other side probably. Um, you know, I think while he's doing that, if we could have the petitioner come up, we're, we're, we're done with unfinished business, but we're into new business now, which is number 10 on our agenda.
10 A.
And if we want to have the petitioner come up and start his preliminary site plan application with us, that would be probably good. Because right now, I don't know what, did it pull up?
Yeah.
Oh, good, go to the next one.
Go to the next one?
Yeah, go to the screen that shows the actual plan, because that's what he's going to start with. Yeah, right there, that's good. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dominic Garrick, the applicant for the Enclaves of Woodbridge Proposed Condominium Project. We also have Larry Goss here, the property owner, and associate Carl Manaco, and our project manager, Richard Risen. We're here tonight to present duplex condos... condos on an existing site that was originally zoned for 120 units. I'm sorry, zoned for 180 units, proposed for 120 units. And we are submitting a site plan for 78 duplex condominiums in the range of 1,500 to approximately 1,900 square feet. They'll have basements. They'll have first-floor master suites. We'll have walkouts. Most of the units are, or half of the units are rather, are located on the golf course. Our intention is to build the project in three phases, and I'm here to answer hopefully all your questions.
Thank you. We're trying to see if we can just bring the picture up a little larger. We have a hard copy up here, but some of the people in the audience might not have it. I'd like...
I zoomed too.
You should be able to double-click on it.
Scroll and scroll.
We have, on mine, I was prepared to kind of go through everything in a chronological order. Why don't we start then with the parallel warping groups? Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you. Our review is in the pack there dated May 2nd. I'll just run through some of our concerns for the commission. This is, yes, on two parcels that are zoned multiple-family residential to the west and south. They're bordered by a recreation district to the east by multiple-family, and then to the north, the high school, which is zoned R2, single-family residential. The site straddles Market with 15 two-unit buildings to the north of the road and 24 two-unit buildings to the south. As a multiple-family proposal, the buildings must conform to the dimensional requirements of the multiple-family residential zoning district. And I will say, the applicant just used the word condominium, which we, that is one of our concerns, one of our questions, is that these are for purchase or for rent. And we were unclear on that in the proposal. But as presented, the multiple-family residential use is subject to the standards, as we said, of the RM district. And it complies to those standards with exception to one overall dimensional requirement, which is where it borders to the north, the high school. And the ordinance states that the, where a multiple-family is adjacent to a single-family residential, whether it's zoned or used, it does have an increased setback of 100 feet to the property that is zoned or used for a single-family residential. And in that area, the applicant is proposing, I believe, 36.9 feet. So it is deficient in that dimension. Additionally, the building spacing that is shown on the site plan shows where the buildings are set 15 feet apart from end to end, or side to side. And according to Section 3.8B, number 5, where buildings are side to side, a minimum separation of 20 feet shall be provided. So we did find the site plan deficient in that measurement as well. Additionally, when considering the access and circulation of the site, the ordinance states that per Section 11.3C, roadway serving more than 20 lots or units shall have two connections to an adjacent public or private roadway. And the proposal shows a roadway connection planned for the drive to the south where more than 20 units are proposed. However, it's shown in three phases on the site plan, and there is not currently a roadway that it shows that it will connect to. So we would ask that the applicant provide more clarification on that stub road there and the intentions of the connection and the requirement that there is a second access point required by the ordinance for the circulation of that side of the development. Additionally, per the... Let's see. We also, for access and circulation, we also have a concern about the driveways provided throughout the site. There wasn't a measurement on the pavement portion of the side yards. So some of the driveways where there is side access, there isn't. It isn't shown. If it is, I think 30 feet is what is required for the turnaround, 25, from the garage to the end of the pavement.
Right.
So that's not shown. So we'd like that to be clarified. As well as, we do have some concerns about the two proposed buildings that are on Market there as well, and as well as the units on the exit sides onto Market from both portions, the north and the south. I guess that would be, and I can't see it from here, of course, the... Thank you. Yes. Lot number two, lot number two and lot 16. One and 39, yes, but also two and 16, as they're as close to Market Street. Their distance from Market Street wouldn't allow the, I believe it says three-car distance, stacking distance for cars to exit the site. That would, that may allow one car. It may impede the stacking of one car to exit the site as well. So we have some questions about that. In addition to that, there were some other things that will be further addressed through the final site plan that we don't really have concerns about right now. Signage, of course, can be submitted to the building department. There was not included on the site landscape detail for the final site plan. And we defer, of course, on-site utilities and storm water management to Mr. Sharp. And I think that is about it for main concerns.
Okay, if that's everything from Lauren at this time, Mr. Sharp, do you want to go into your letter? And I read yours earlier, but I can't pull it up on my screen right now.
Hopefully, it's clear. There's a lot going on with this because of the, you know, the previous development with the Burton-Catsman, with the Abbey Ridge Apartments as far as easements and things like that that are going on. Again, I'll just try to hit some of the high points. Again, as Lauren had mentioned, you know, are these going to be for sale or for rent units? You know, if they're for sale and it's going to be a condominium, then they'll need to bring master deeds and bylaws and all that stuff back to you for final site plan approval. Let's see. Proposed development in adjacent parcels contains several previously recorded utility easements. We would like those easements shown basically to confirm that where they're showing their utilities matches with what has been previously recorded through either the Abbey Ridge easements or for the easements on the now-owned school parcel that is to the, that would be to the east, because there is supposed to be a sanitary sewer extension through there and a water main. And I do not believe that the water lines up. The sewer may, but I do not believe that the water, as proposed on phase three of this development, lines up with the existing easement that exists on the school property. Although it wasn't included in the site plan submittal, there was previously a traffic impact study that was done as part of the overall Sand Hill and Abbey Ridge. They made the improvements on M24, and there wouldn't be any additional requirements to service this on Market Street or on M24. Everything has been satisfactorily addressed there. Jumping into the site grade, really, they didn't submit anything. They're not required to at this point. We have a general idea of what the plan's going to be from the previous submittals, but again, nothing really. Sanitary sewer, all right. Sanitary sewer is a little interesting. With the previous development, we agreed that Phase 1 and generally Phase 2, all of that sewage is going to flow out to M24, and we don't have an issue with that. We agreed to that with the exception of, and then once you get to units, I want to say it's around 20 and 32 on the site plan, all of that sewage is supposed to flow easterly through the development, across the school property, and over to North Oxford Road. So the way that it's shown, either, basically the phase line from 32, units 32 and 20 needs to be moved slightly, because those units are supposed to be in the east sanitary sewer district. Let's see, that's comment 10. Comment 11 talks about buildings 20 and 32 going out. And same thing with comment number 13 under sanitary sewer. Proposed sanitary sewer must extend to the north property line, abutting parcel 04. That's the Abbey Ridge Phase 2, just to make sure that everything lines up. Because again, it didn't seem, it didn't appear that it was going to with where the recorded easement actually is. Water distribution, there is ample water to service these phases. It needs to be looped back out, though. Everything that's shown is a dead end right now. And again, maybe Mr. Goss will be able to explain that on behalf of Burton-Catsman, that they're going to agree to allow these water lines and sewer lines and roadways to, you know, go loop back out to Market Street. But at this point, based on what we saw, it's deficient in that manner. With regards to storm sewer, Phase 1 and Phase 2 storm sewer is proposed to be collected in underground piping and directed to basically the detention pond that's on the golf course. We have no objections to that. Everything was previously, there were improvements made when Abbey Ridge Phase 1 came in, and so that is all satisfactory. However, the proposed storm sewer for Phase 3, it just terminates at the property line. I'm assuming that their intent is to continue onto the school property, which we would need to see in easement or agreements that they have with the school property to do that. But again, just, you know, the water, their sewer, and their sanitary, it's all just kind of stopping at that property line. And we need to see what's going on beyond that.
Just a quick question. And didn't, in the previous development phase with Burton-Catsman, didn't they seek and get those easements through that property that had to the east?
There is a water easement. There is a sewer easement, and...
And can't we continue with that easement then?
Excuse me?
In this development, we could still continue to utilize that easement.
They could, and they've actually been relocated since that time when the sale of the property to the schools occurred. And we just need that shown on an overall plan so that we can make sure that all this is going to work.
There aren't any problems with us making this happen?
You know, like the storm sewer, I mean, I...
Irregardless of...
Because I went out of my way to do the research, I believe that there is an easement that was recently put in place with the schools for a stormwater easement. However, it's not supplied in the documents, and so what's been submitted to us, we can't really review it, is the point.
All right.
That's what I meant. I think that this is all going to be taken care of. I got a good feeling about it.
In the future.
But we need to see, you know, we need to see how all this stuff is going to be extended and connected to the other future properties or across the school property. I'm going to jump to the pavement sidewalks in Kirbyan area. The width of East Market Street isn't shown correctly on there. Actually, the way that it was developed, the roadway itself is 120 feet wide, the right-of-way is, and that's what Burton-Catsman technically owns as part of the apartments. But the roadway easement is only 86 feet. So units 1 and 39 are actually going across property that they don't own. Again, maybe easements can be granted or whatever it is, but at this point, they don't even have access to that roadway for units 1 and 39, because Burton-Catsman owns property in between there, like little slivers of land.
So for clarification, then, the only thing they have the right to is where they actually have the ingress and egress approaches going north and south for their actual drive?
Correct.
So, oh. So what is there, seven, eight feet there? What is it?
I believe it's 120 feet is what's shown on the, in the deed, you know, what Abbey Ridge or Burton-Catsman owns. And the roadway is 86. So do the math, 14, 34, 17 feet on each side roughly.
So they have to seek and get that from Burton-Catsman?
Correct.
Okay.
And it might just be an agreement. That needs to happen. But again, all of this...
I'm just trying to make sure I'm on track.
All of this needs to just kind of be put in place, because right now, they don't actually have access to that roadway.
I got it.
As noted in the fire department review, you know, and Lauren mentioned as well, the second means of egress, you know, must be provided for Phase 3, looping it back around. And let's see, improvements on the easterly end of Cornerstone Drive. Again, that's up in Phase 3. It kind of extends onto the Burton-Catsman property right now. No safety path is required since it doesn't abut a public road. And that's it. So, I mean, all in all, we're supportive of, you know, that it can be done, that all these things can be put together, and these agreements can be made, and they can show the easements and get everything to line up. But based on what has been provided to us at this point, I have no objections to Phases 1 and 2. However, Phase 3, you know, I would, I couldn't offer my support on that on Phase 3 or on that portion of it. So however you want to put that into your motions or your, you know, your discussion. Phase 1 and 2, slam dunks, no problem there, but Phase 3 is kind of messed up. Or not, I shouldn't say messed up, just not enough information shown at this time.
Probably early for comment, but is it due to the fact, then, that you're concerned about whether we're going to be able to make everything work right with water and sewer and all the easements necessary that we need?
And again, yes, that's it. 100%. I think that it can all work. I mean, I know what the intent of Phase 2 for Abbey Ridge is going to be. But if Phase 2 of Abbey Ridge doesn't get built, then you're kind of left with what you see right here. You've got a dead-end road with no cul-de-sac, no hammerhead, you know, water mains and sewers not matching up and that type of thing. So it just all needs to kind of be, it's almost like a partnership between those two.
That might be something the petitioner has to resolve.
Right, and they may be able to address that tonight, whereas that's kind of what I'm hoping for.
All right. Does that conclude your review right now, Joe? I guess on behalf of Chief Schultz, because he's not here this evening, and as part of his letter dated April 15th of 2019, Enclaves of Woodbridge, his preliminary review had only about six items, and that one was there should be no parking on the hydrant side of the street. I'd like to read this into the record for Mr. Schultz, Chief Schultz, Peter Schultz. And that the cul-de-sac on Brookstone Drive and Hammerhead Turn turnaround on Cornerstone Drive meet the fire department's requirements. So that looks like that's good. The hydrant spacing meets all the requirements. Phase 3 may not be built until the street is finished to provide the second means of egress. So he has a concern there. The street names are all good and acceptable to him. And if there's any questions regarding any of the issues he had, then he gave his name and number and how he can be contacted, just so that's in the record for the Oxford Fire Department. And then in regards to the Township Parks and Recreation, which is from Ron Davis, he has reviewed the preliminary site plan. His letter is dated April 15, 2019, for the Enclaves of Woodbridge dated 4/8/19. At this time, the Parks and Recreation Department has no comments, and he's okay with it. And the Lieutenant Scott Patterson from the Sheriff's Office wrote a letter May 1, 2019 regarding the Enclaves of Woodbridge. Dear Sir, I have reviewed the site plans for the Enclaves of Woodbridge, and I do not have any recommendations at this time. So he has no concerns over it. And those are the letters from all the different parties that we would have to read into the record and to this preliminary site plan review. So I think what we'll do now is ask if the commissioners would like to make any comments regarding what they just heard. Does anyone have anything they want to start with up front?
All my questions were addressed by both the planner and the engineer. Thank you.
And I guess in regards to that, before we go any further with questioning, I think the petitioner has heard some of the concerns that maybe the planner, the planning consultant and the engineering consultant addressed, what they may have to be, you know, need resolved. So that now, Meg, do you have any concerns?
I do not.
John, yourself?
I have some concerns, but I think they've been covered by the other...
By the other two parties?
Mainly the egress. Go ahead.
I have the same comments.
So we would be redundant to bring them all back up again based on what the previous consultants have just addressed?
Tom? I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding Phase 3, is that something you guys are going to work out? I'm going to be blunt. Is it something...
Yeah. I kind of wanted to go down...
Yeah, uh, uh, I kinda wanted to go down a couple of the items, one of the, uh, one of the items that was pointed out was the, the access to one and thirty-nine, which is the road right-of-way, I think when the surveyor, uh, surveyed the property which was going to be sold to us, they put in a hundred and twenty feet, and maybe that was the original plan, and then when it was dedicated, it was eighty-six, uh, feet, so that's just a matter of a rededication or, you know, and resurvey, so I don't think we have, uh, issues there. Uh, Phase Three, we know, cause we've been in the meetings, and we know that, you know, there's a lot more work that needs to be done before Phase Three goes, our intention is to get Phase One going right-of-way, uh, and then Phase Two, and then Phase Three, I mean, that, that's really our goal, so Phase Three, we're probably looking at maybe two to three years to work out all the engineering details, uh, that need to happen, and, and obviously, we know the comments and we know all those items, uh, we're aware even before tonight that when Phase Three goes in, there's gotta be off-site improvements that need to happen, uh, and also, we have some more things to work out with the landowner, cause they own to the east, and, and we have to work out agreements as to cost-sharing and timing of those improvements, uh, so really, our focus is to get a preliminary site plan approval, uh, and approvals to start Phase One, that, that's our goal and intention, um, and then we have a little bit of time on, uh, Phase Three. Uh, the other comment about the phase line, I think it was put in the wrong place between two and three, our engineer probably got some information, um, and did put the line in the wrong place, uh, because our goal was, okay, where do we need to be before we need to get to the Phase Three, uh, items that need to be addressed, so that definitely can be...
Sure.
Adjusted in terms of that. Um, is that the engineer, any other engineering comments that may need to address?
Just a letter. I guess if you're, well, they're more, they're more like, they're not really...
They're more engineering design.
They're more engineering design and things like that.
That need to be worked out.
I don't think we need to get into here right now, and I think, based on the letter, you can kinda see where we're going, I would like to see some sort of a drawing that does show the easements that are recorded, and your utilities that are being proposed, so that I can see that they all match up with each other.
Yeah, we'll work with the, uh, landowner, because that, that's the balance of his property, uh, which we don't have under contract.
Yeah, I think that by doing that, that would alleviate, you know, at least half of the comments that we have right here as to what's going on.
Jack?
If, if preliminary site plan is given for Phase One and Two, they'll have to come back for Phase Three if we don't address that tonight, right?
Yeah, and my, my biggest thing for me is, you know, for ingress and egress with more than twenty lots, is there a way that they could show, uh, a future roadway, a future, it's to, to make sure we have provided easements to come back out to Market Street?
For Three?
Yeah. Is that, is that even feasible? I mean, mentally, we all know that you're stubbed right now to continue that roadway back out.
I think it's designed to loop around, but I would, I'd leave that answer to the, uh...
Well, I think from the planning commission's point of view, and I guess what I'll say when I mean more that from me, I guess from my point of view, um, I'm, I'm reluctant to grant, I mean, I'm, I'm real, I'm excited about the development, I'm good with that, uh, but I'm reluctant to grant, um, any kind of variance and differences when I don't get my points of ingress and egress kinda guaranteed to me, so I'd wanna see something that tells me in the future that we aren't gonna have difficulty if that road, if Phase Three never takes off, say, it never...
If Phase Three is, I believe Phase Three is gonna be subject to a lot of things, so...
Well, right, but I wanna make sure that I'm gonna have a second, I'm, I want that loop on that roadway.
Well, is that addressed in final engineering, because a lot of communities say these are, this is preliminary site plan approval, but these items, you will not get your approvals and permits to move forward in final engineering until all these items are addressed, so is that a way that we can handle it for Phase Three?
Jim, are you, are you saying that's a way we can handle it?
What's that?
I, I mean, I just like assurance that I'm gonna get my roadway. How do I make that, how do I make that assurance? See what I mean?
I, I agree.
Cause I believe in, in all the comments, it says, you need, from your fire chief, from your engineer, you need easements and you need access and turning points, and we understand...
And you'll provide that, and you'll provide that in the final...
We understand that, and we have to work with the landowner, uh, on that, uh, but we would like to get a preliminary site plan approval, and then we can, we can design our engineering per phase, and, and obviously, uh, with that condition, on Phase Three, you're not gonna get approval, we're not gonna get approval for engineering to move forward until all those conditions have been met.
And does that mean all the concerns that people had, including the setback differences between the buildings and such?
Well, the setback, yeah, I'll get to the setback issues, uh, I'm just dealing with the engineering issue right now.
All right.
Can I also say regarding the roadway and Phase Three, that if Phase Three was taken off the table right now to move forward with Phase One and Two, the roadway would need to be approv, be able to be, would need to be, be able to be approved as a standalone development?
Roadway?
Right.
Yeah.
So, there would be...
Kinda what I'm trying to get to.
Cul-de-sac, turnaround.
But he said he could address that at final engineering.
They'll put in a temporary cul-de-sac and then just pull it out later on.
Here's, uh, my thoughts, you're looking to start one, you're looking to get approval for two, to get one and two approved on a preliminary site plan, you're gonna have to work out that ingress and egress for the second entrance, but temporarily, you would put a cul-de-sac because it's under twenty units in Phase Two.
Correct.
So, your drawing would then, final would be temporary cul-de-sac, Phase Three to close, I'm not telling you how to do this, but...
No, we have, uh...
One of the conditions that we would make in our motion is to include all the unresolved issues in the planner's letter and the engineer's letter, if you wanna move forward with it, you're gonna have to come back here and say, okay, number, at final, we're gonna put a cul-de-sac in there instead of putting three in now, you work out your easement agreements with Goff and Burton, and then you can do the three later.
We're totally fine with that. Yeah, I think our focus is on Phase One right now, we'd like to see if we can push and even get that in this year, and then depending on sales, Phase Two next year, and then...
On the far east side of Market Street, if you drive the site, I was there today, they have some natural driveways set up for the second and third egress, is that something that's intended to be used, those cut, cutaways that are existing?
Pass the clubhouse?
Yes.
That would be, I'd, I'd leave that to the landowner, that's his area, Larry, you can answer it then.
Hi, good evening, Larry Goss, partner with Burton Katzman, uh, those were, uh, put there as part of the overall site plan that you had approved way back when, um, so that's still the game plan, and just a quick comment on that, we, we're very excited about this part of the project getting off the ground, it's a, as you can see, a fabulous-looking, uh, part of what, what's going on here, so we were, we're gonna be cooperative with any and all easements that they need to satisfy the planning commission and engineering, so we're working on this together.
Well, what's your first name again, I'm sorry?
Dominic.
Dominic, thank you, should've known better. Um, for Phase Two, I mean, is there some, is there a temporary cul-de-sac or something that could be put in?
Absolutely.
So that's what you would bring back to us?
We do that on all our projects that work with Phase...
So then we could get Phase One and Phase Two, and...
Yep.
And, okay, so then you did answer it pretty much, what I'm looking for, so I think...
The planner has some concerns.
Yeah, I just wanna address one at a time, so if the engineer, we can...
I can live with that part of it then.
Okay. The planner's comments, um, let's start with the setbacks, uh, and typically, in these type of developments, we've done quite a few, fifteen feet is pretty standard with setbacks, it, it's pretty much standard in most residential communities, fifteen feet between homes, and this in essence is, is about, unless, a duplex is fifteen hundred square foot, like a three thousand foot home, so we find that fifteen feet is usually allowed, and, and it's, most of the communities, we do it through a PUD, and it's one of the exceptions allowed in the PUD, this isn't a PUD, so would have to go through the ZBA.
Right, there's no agreement.
So, the reason we have the fifteen feet is, we're, instead of just putting all driveways down the street, we tried to mix it up and put a few side entrance garages, it gives you a little bit of, you know, instead of just a garage all the way down the street, so in doing that, we, we need a little bit more side yard, so, like I said, in standard in most communities, fifteen feet is, is, um, allowed, and we have, on the side turn, we have twenty-five feet of drive, and we have thirty feet in between the units, uh, that's pretty much a standard as well. So, can we get to the twenty feet? Yes, but we would have to then take out all the side entrance or lose, uh, units, um, so we're hoping to, uh, seek a variance, uh, on that and leave it at fifteen feet as the plan shows, uh, and the other issue, as the planner has indicated, is the, this unit here, because this is a residential zoned area, the, the ordinance calls for a hundred-foot buffer as opposed to, uh, normal, it's thirty-five, forty-foot, uh, rear yard setbacks, it is, I don't know if it was rezoned, it is the high school property, so I don't know if there would any, be any, uh, I mean, we're backing act to a ball field, you know, we're at thirty-six, thirty-seven feet, uh, again, if we don't, we lose a unit, we're not backing up to another dwelling, so we would ask to seek a variance on, on that matter as well at the same time. I believe those are the only two variances, is there any others that I missed? Yeah, there's, typically, it's forty feet, we're at thirty-six point nine, but because it's a residential to a multifamily, it calls out a hundred foot, so that's the, the one variance.
When I first looked at the plan, Dominic, I was a little opposed on that variance, but then when I went back and looked at the property, there's some elevation changes there that, um, would even be something that I would maybe be more concerned about granting something in, in regards to a variance, if, if the variance board was willing to do that. We don't do that from the planning commission level, cause we're not using a PUD, so we don't have the agreement terms, but, um, when I looked at the elevation changes, then I, I'm a little more acceptable to that part of that variance, um, I'm not really opposed to, uh, maybe getting the distance between the buildings if you had to go to front entrance garages, because your views are very attractive on your front entrance garage, uh, format, um, with your buildings, so if you could get your building spacing a little better and still went with front en, entrance garages, I'd still be okay, I mean, that would be more suitable to me.
That's really a preference of, of what you want the community to look like, cause we can achieve, I believe, the same amount of units.
I'm very happy with the units that are on Stony Lake Drive, I think they've been attractive and very good, uh, neighbors in the community with us.
Okay.
And they're all front entrance garages, and I, and they've done very well, and I think this development could do very well with front entrance, if you could get a little better distance between buildings, I, that's me talking again as a planning commission member, um, I would be more suitable for that.
Well, we've looked at it, I think we even looked at it again this morning, and I, I believe, Rich, we looked at it, that with twenty-foot spacing, if that's what is required and, and recommended, uh, if we took out the side entrances, you, we would be...
And only because to set a precedence in regards to that and future development activity in the township, I don't like to open up that can of worms, uh, down the road with, with other people, not including just yourselves, but...
Well, most, most of the side yard in multifamily is done because the buildings are huge, you know, you're dealing with a six-plex, a twelve-plex, and, and so you, you, you have that twenty foot, and we understand, but this is in essence is, is basically a residential building, and I think even under your residential, um, one of the zonings, you allow pretty much fifteen feet, so i, it's a standard that we use in other communities, but again, with the preferences, the look of, uh, if you don't mind the front entrance, we can achieve the twenty feet, and I believe the same amount of units, then, then the decision is, do we go for a variance?
I'm pleased with the development, first of all, you reduced the number of units down on the property compared to what was there before.
Correct.
From the original design criteria.
Hundred and twenty to seventy-eight.
Yeah, I'm, that's, that's great, I mean, that takes, you know, some of the traffic and everything else, and, you know, seven trips per day per household and all that count, so I'm, I'm, I'm aware of all that, and I'm really grateful that you came in with this type of plan, I think duplexes would be great units in there, um, I just wanna get the separation point more in line with what the township ordinance is, cause it is a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
It's site condos technically, not a PUD, so, um, I'd be a little more, I wasn't in the beginning, but I'm a little more on the variance request on the setback to the north.
Okay.
But maybe the building spacing, and then if you get the engineering issues resolved and the other concerns from the planner resolved in regards to this, I, I guess I'd be, unless other commissioners have other concerns we haven't heard, we'll wait and see what, if we're ready for a motion for preliminary approval.
The other, the other concern that I have that needs to be addressed is that is the, um, the, what's it called in here, it's the spacing requirements for, um, cars waiting, there must be sufficient onsite storage to accommodate at least three cute vehicles waiting to park or exit without using a portion of the public right-of-way obstructing, obstructing existing vehicle site distance or otherwise interfering, interfering with street traffic, um, which is the cars waiting to leave the site and, and to interrupt Market Street, but the planning commission can provide a waiver for that, we just need to put on a waiver.
Well, yeah, but you're talking about how many people stack up at one time, and maybe it's in the morning when they're trying to get out to go to work or something like that, or...
Right.
You know, at peak, at peak times or something like that, and I'm thinking, you know, looking at site distance down the road and what comes in through this way, and then what's coming in off of twenty-four, uh, we don't even know what'll happen there yet until some of those other properties develop, I, I could waiver on that, I mean, personally myself, because of the reduction in the number of units, I don't think the traffic flow's gonna be anywhere near what could've been on this property by what's allowed by ordinance.
And if I can comment too, if we take off the side yard that buys twenty-five feet extra at those entrances...
Right. That's through the, the...
If we go to front entrance.
Through the owner, right, to get that?
If, if, this is a side, and this is a side, and I think that's their concern as you go out.
Right, if it became...
If the driveway was twenty-five feet...
So it moves, it moves even for an additional space?
Right.
Right, but I could waiver on part of that anyway, duh, you know, based on the traffic flow.
It's really just on lots sixteen and two also, as people are exiting the site.
Yeah, the three, the three lots in combination, they're thirty-eight, sixteen and two.
They put front garages on them.
Yeah.
Would, would you be still opposed then for the side on fifteen and thirty-eight coming in?
Oh, down the street?
Okay, and, and if we can achieve the twenty feet, you don't have a problem with the side entrance?
No.
The twenty-five and the thirty-foot empty?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can achieve it, absolutely not.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
Cause I, I think in some instances with the curves, we can still achieve that.
Ed?
Are, are we looking to have the preliminary site plan approved administratively with the planner and the two consultants if they meet the, the requirements that we're, uh, pursuing here?
I think if they can amend this plan and bring it back to us...
They're gonna bring it back here.
Um, that, I guess, Lauren, let's comment on that right now.
Yeah, so you're talking about the process of how we move forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, because it's preliminary, um, they will come back with a final site plan anyways?
Yeah.
Have to, so...
You could approve it preliminarily.
So, you can approve it preliminarily and, uh, make it conditional upon the, um, compliance with the engineer and the planner's reviews, and then when they come back with changes, they can come to us directly, and we can administratively make sure that they're in compliance.
That's what Ed's asking.
And move into the final, without coming back to planning.
Then they wouldn't have to come to us, they could just come back with their final.
With the final, exactly.
That saves everybody a little bit of time, that's good, I don't mind.
This preliminary tonight is one and two, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I, I don't see...
Phase One and Phase Two, that's it.
Yeah, I, I guess, however you choose to, I mean, you can put a preliminary plan with conditions on engineering on Phase Three.
I'd, I'd wanna see him come back, I'd wanna see him come back for Phase Three.
Phase Three, right, so that means that their amended site plan coming to us will remove three, it will only have one and two on it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I understand, but he, he said he could put a temporary cul-de-sac in there if he had to to get people back out.
Yeah.
I'm, that's, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm for moving forward.
Okay, I'm ready.
Oh, boy.
Ready?
Yeah, it's gonna be a different moment.
Take good notes.
I'll give you a copy. I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for the Enclaves at Woodbridge, part, Phases One and Two, Parcels Number Zero Four dash two-two dash two-zero-zero dash two zer, dash zero-two-three, and Zero Four dash two-two dash two-zero-zero dash zero-two-five, Zoned RM, Multiple Family Residential, Applicant Woodbridge of Oxford LLC. This recommendation of approval for Phases One and Two is based on the following findings. The planning commission granting a waiver for Section eight-point-three, C-point-two, sufficient onsite storage for vehicle... sufficient onsite storage for vehicles waiting to park or exit, any unresolved items contained in the township planner's review dated May second, two thousand nineteen, any unresolved items contained in the township engineer's review dated April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and any unresolved items contained in the Oxford Fire Department letter dated April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, end of motion.
Is there for, is there-
I'll second.
Okay, I, I have a motion with conditions from Mr. Curtis, and I have a second from Mr. Noel, is there any discussion from the planning commission members on the motion?
I was trying to, did, did you include the, could be approved administratively?
Don't, I don't think-
You don't, yeah, you don't have to call it out, that's-
You don't have to, you know, okay.
Because he said in regards to both those letters from those-
Right, they'll have to submit to comply.
All right, right.
They'll have to resubmit, yeah.
Does everybody understand the motion? Do we need a roll call? We'll need a roll call, Susan.
Noth?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yeah, good, I'm, I'm glad, bring this forward.
Thank you, thank you very much, we look forward to building it.
I think there's a need in the community for duplexes, I think they're, they could do well here.
I think they will, it's a great site, great, they got a great community here, and-
Well, it's less impact on what we had originally going in there.
Absolutely.
So we took and reduced the numbers down by several, and with the duplex component, I think it'd be great, I'm forward, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right.
Meg?
Seeing, are there any communications from any other committees, our Economic Development Committee, do we have any communications there?
No, we haven't, Matt, we're going to set something up probably in June.
Well-
I can't get-
Can't get everybody together?
No.
Okay.
We're going to have to change the date or something, because it's getting harder and harder with summer coming.
Now, the ordinance review committee is working and moving forward with, with other issues right now, and one of them is food truck vending, and, which we're not as concerned about as we were in the beginning, but we, we have some other, we're following the list that was pretty much given to us from the township's board's direction from day one, so we're getting back on track, we might get sub, we might get lined up with something else here in the future, just because of what happened at the previous board meeting from what I just heard, so, but we are on track, and we're moving forward in the right direction to get some of these other things in place with the right amendments, and we're going to have, continue, and we have our meetings accordingly. John, you want to talk about zoning board of appeals?
There's been no meetings this year.
Are there any other comments from any of the planner or engineer this evening? Lauren?
No comments.
Mr. Sharp?
Nothing further.
Well, seeing none, then I think we have it on adjournment.
A second there.
Okay, we don't need a motion to adjourn.
Nope.